Okay, this August 7th, 2019 meeting of the Oyster River Corporate School Board will come to order. Our first order of business is the approval of the agenda. I have no changes in it. So could I have a motion to approve the agenda?
Motion to approve the agenda.
Denise? Moved by Denise, seconded by Allen.
I'll second.
Anybody have changes? All those in favor raise your hand. The agenda is approved. Public comment? No? Good. Approval of the minutes. Denise, you had one change.
Yes. It's on page two, under the purchase of the transit van approval lease. It says that I motion to purchase the transit vans without a down payment. That's incorrect. It was with the down payment.
Okay. And there are a couple things on page four. Michael mentioned to me that he thinks that the reassignment of committees for Brian and Al, that should be specific, that Brian is moving to the tech committee and Al is moving to the sustainability committee. So could that be added?
And who's moving to sustainability?
Al Holland.
Speaking.
And there needs to be some mention of adjournment. And, you know, I don't remember exactly how we adjourned, because we came out of non-meeting, I think around 8:10. And then, I don't know who made the motion to adjourn and who seconded it. I know, you know, anybody have a recollection of that? It's not, I couldn't check the video.
I probably seconded it.
You know, I thought that might be the case, and I thought Al might have made the motion, because that's the way.
I think Denise did.
Yeah?
No, no, no. I do think it was Alan.
So would it be okay if we added, because we need something here, the board re-entered public session at 8:10. Al Holland made a motion to adjourn, seconded by Brian Sastneris. The board voted 7-0 to adjourn at 8:11. Is that, I think that's about right. So if that could be added, I have it here, Laura, if you need it.
So they re-entered at 8:10?
Yeah.
And adjourned at 9:11?
It would be 8:11, because we just, we re-entered and then we just adjourned. Okay.
Re-entered at 8:10, adjourned at 9:11.
Yep. Okay. Okay, Denise?
So with those changes, I move to approve the minutes.
Moved by Denise, seconded by Brian. All those in favor raise your hand. Seven in favor, the minutes are approved. The communication workshop meeting minutes, here there's no decisions made, so it just gets the sense of the meeting. So could I have a motion to approve that? Denise?
I motion to approve the workshop minutes.
Moved by Denise, seconded by Brian. You okay with those? All in favor raise your hand. Seven in favor, the workshop meeting minutes, say that 10 times, are approved. So announcements, commendations, and comments. These tongue twisters. Announcements, commendations, and comments from the district. Well, welcome. Yeah.
Good morning.
Good.
I missed, I missed the last board meeting, so I want to make an effort to say hello. My name is Misty Lowe, I'm the interim principal from Masway. Just wanted to let you know what's been happening in the month of July. I made an invitation to all staff to come in and meet with me personally, one-on-one. I've met 20 teachers so far, and that's been great, I have more scheduled. I've spent a lot of time with Mr. Goldsmith, which has been great. Sorry, I got a little nervous.
That's all right.
I served on the school board too, so I should appreciate when people get nervous, when they're addressing the board. Let's see, I have put out some invitations to the community and parents, to meet with them in August, just to put myself out there and offer people an opportunity to come into the school and to meet me. And I just really wanted to thank you for this opportunity. I'm having a wonderful time.
We want to thank you for doing this.
Yeah, thank you.
Other comments from the district? From the board? I'd just like to mention Elizabeth Strout, who is a writer, is a Pulitzer Prize-winning author of a book called Olive Kittredge. She went to Oyster River High School in, I think, the 80s. And she just has a story out in The New Yorker where Olive Kittredge reappears. So I assume Olive Kittredge is coming back into probably a novel that she's writing. This knockout story called "Mother Was Child." But I thought, you know, to have a writer of that distinction come out of our high school, maybe at some point there might be some kind of recognition, and certainly maybe a community read of her work, because she's really fabulous. And her mother, Bev Strout, was a teacher in the high school. I think her father taught at the university, so a real local product who's made, done wonderful work, so I want to mention her.
He does TV shows.
Yeah? Mm-hmm. Other comments? So we have a presentation on sustainability bus results. Justin? Or I guess Maggie?
Yeah.
Maggie.
I'll go first.
Okay.
Maggie Morrison, the sustainability coordinator. I'll be introducing Justin, but as a way of introduction to his presentation, part of the strategic plan for transportation is to always be investigating opportunities to reduce our fuel costs and find ways to have more efficient buses. As a result, last year, the sustainability committee agreed to investigate alternatives and to get a baseline on our maintenance and fuel costs, so that you can be guided in your future decision-making. We hired Justin Klinger to, for 50 hours, to research and analyze data. In the future, I will be coming to give you regular updates on our efforts this year and of our activities and our initiatives. Justin?
Okay. Welcome, Justin.
Hi, everyone. Thank you for having me. So I know my PowerPoint just went away. Okay. Well, I guess I'll begin. My name's Justin. I graduated from UNH in 2018 with my degree in political science and international affairs. And then I graduated class of 2019 with my master's in public policy. As Maggie just mentioned, I had the opportunity to intern with the sustainability department here at ORCSD from about late December through mid-May. This role had two parts. It was investigating the viability of bringing electric school buses to the fleet, as well as the possibility of bringing electric charging stations to the parking lots of the various school facilities. So, most of the electric school buses in the United States are deployed in California currently. Twin Rivers School District, which is located outside of Sacramento, California, provided valuable data for this study, as well as a bus pilot program in Massachusetts. So the Twin Rivers School District planned for at least 10 years of use from their electric school buses, which mirrors the 10 years of use that we expect out of our diesel school buses. For the kilowatt mile, the Twin Rivers School District got 17 to 19 cents per kilowatt mile, and then diesel runs about .86 cents a mile, or 86 cents a mile, so significantly cheaper. Electric school bus only has 10 moving parts within their engine, whereas a diesel school bus has more than 100. So there's a 75% cost in maintenance savings, that's due to the oil changes, diesel filters, air filters, et cetera. However, the most expensive maintenance cost, which is tires, does remain. From November 2018 through March 15th, 2019, the Twin Rivers School District spent about $621 a year for maintenance and inspection on their buses. And then currently, right now, they have 16 buses that are 95% on the road, and they have good data going back to 2016 for their buses. So there were some challenges with bringing electric school buses. Twin Rivers didn't have any operational challenges, however, there was a delay in funding. Most of their program funding came out of the California Cap'n Trade Program, so that wouldn't be a concern for us. It took longer than expected to install infrastructure, which would have to be a consideration if we decided to do this. The topography and climate in California is very different. It's a very warm and dry climate with very few hills, whereas here in New Hampshire it's significantly colder. However, the Massachusetts Pilot Survey, which looked at Concord, Massachusetts, Amherst, Massachusetts, and another town, is similar weather, and there was no decrease, or significant decrease, in battery usage over the mile range due to the weather, which was nice. So these are two graphs from current diesel buses that ORCSD owns. On the graph at the left compares three different buses for 2015, one bus that was purchased in 2004, a 2009 bus, and then a 2015 bus. These buses all averaged around 16,000 miles in 2015. The fuel costs were about the same, which would be expected. And then the maintenance cost, you could see, was about $4,000 for the 2004 and 2009 bus, and then cheaper for the 2015 bus, which would be expected since there was no. And then you have miles per gallon. For those three buses in 2015 as well, you're looking at about seven miles per gallon for 2004 and 2015 buses, and about five miles per gallon for the 2009 bus. It's unclear what may cause this. It may be due to highway mileage or more backcountry roads, which would be less miles per gallon. So a new diesel bus costs about $90,000. And then most of the ORCSD buses drive more than 10,000 miles a year. The three buses that I showed did about 16,000 miles a year. The overall costs for maintenance and fuel range from $6,427 through $14,266 for those years. So electric bus is significantly more expensive for capital cost. It's over three times as much, at $321,235 for a line bus, which is the kind of bus that is out in California, Twin Rivers School District, as well as the kind analyzed in the Massachusetts Pilot Survey. So an estimated yearly operational cost would be $1,739.66. Roughly $1,120 would be for electricity, and $620 would be for maintenance. And this is based on electricity costs of .0799 cents for a kilowatt hour, or for a per kilowatt, or 1.4 kilowatt hours per mile, which are both numbers from the EV Bus Pilot Project. Can I answer any questions about the buses before I go on to the electric charging? Ken?
Just curious, in your initial slide, you delineated between kilowatt mile and mile. Are they really, are they the same?
Good question, yeah. So the mile is for the diesel bus, the kilowatt mile would be, it would be a mile, only the kilowatt would refer to the electricity rather than the gas, so.
Okay, so that's the way you phrase it. And with the buses, how long could a bus ride for before it needs to be charged, assuming it starts at its full charge load?
I believe in the Massachusetts Pilot Survey, it was 150 miles, and I think that was the same for the Twin Rivers as well. But what they do is they would charge it overnight, and then they would run it in the morning bus, and then they would charge it between the morning and the afternoon runs, and then they would charge it again in the afternoon, like after the afternoon run, all night. For ORCSD buses, most of them run like throughout the day, so it would be charged overnight and then the morning run, and however long it could go, before it would run out of battery.
Okay. And I was thinking as well, the way the buses are utilized sometimes for field trips.
Yeah.
And where they go.
Yeah, I think for, well, because this technology is pretty new, I think initially you wouldn't want to get, use it for those field trips in longer runs, just because of the fear of running out. But as the technology improves over time, the range for miles would get increased, and so that bus, you could take longer.
Okay. And then you were going to talk about charging stations, so.
I had a question.
Oh, yeah.
Now, the obvious advantage to an electric bus is that it's not going to be emitting carbon dioxide.
Correct.
But does it draw energy? Does the electricity that it uses, is that drawn from power plants that do use energy? So it is indirectly using fossil fuel?
That's correct. Here in New Hampshire, our primary source of energy is the Seabook Nuclear Power Plant, so that would be a concern, but not as big of a concern, just because that nuclear power plant doesn't use fossil fuels, but yes.
Okay. Can you go on?
Do, so using these numbers, how many miles will we have to drive the bus before we have a break-even point between a diesel and an electric?
Sorry, I didn't include that in my analysis. I don't have that number.
A lot.
Okay. Go ahead.
Um, sorry, let me do, yeah. So for the, we submitted a survey to everyone with an ORCSD email address. This was sent out to roughly 450 people, and we had 153 responses for a 34% response rate. We asked some general questions, how do they get to work? If you drive, how many miles do you typically drive on trip to work? Would you use an electric charging station if one was where you worked? Do you currently own an electric vehicle, et cetera? It was about nine questions. And what the data told us was that if there were electric charging stations and people owned electric vehicles, they would use them. However, it wouldn't necessarily be a big cause for them to go out and buy an electric vehicle. Most of the people who own them now charge them overnight, and there's some employers who offer it during the day, but those that currently, if an employer doesn't offer it, a vehicle would most likely be enough to get the range from home to work and back, so they would just charge it at home. There's some employers that charge the employees to charge their vehicle, and others that provide it free, has a benefit of working there. 31% of respondents, or 45 people, would be willing to pay to charge it. Any questions about that electric vehicle charging survey?
Are you going to go on about charging stations?
No.
No. So with the buses, and you kind of mentioning our buses run throughout the day.
Yeah.
Charging therefore would need to be kind of after-school hours.
Correct.
How long does it take to charge a bus? How many charging stations would we need? What is the cost of a charging station? And do we need personnel there if we're going to be rotating from one bus to another, which becomes a cost to hire someone? Was that anything you looked at?
Yeah, parts of it. So for an electric bus, it would be bigger batteries. So it's typically a level-three charging station, which is more expensive than a level-two, which would be required for like personal vehicles. They would typically be charged all night. It would depend on like how many buses the school system set to buy for how many charging stations they needed. So if, you know, you bought one bus, then only one would be needed, and it would go with plugs. I would assume that you could probably charge two or three buses on one station, but probably more than that you would have to look to increase. So I think that is your question.
Any idea how much a level-three charging station costs? What the price on that is?
I believe it's in the hundreds of thousands of dollars, but there may be some rebates, especially through the co-op for that.
Okay, great. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any questions? Well, thank you, Justin.
Questions? Okay. All right, thank you for having me. I'd like to thank Maggie, Jacqueline, and Sue Caswell. They provided me a lot of help with this internship. And then Lisa Hoppe, the transportation director, was instrumental in providing me with data. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Just for the board's information, if you would, just write down the first Tuesday in October and the third Tuesday in October, not for a decision tonight, but the Barrington School Board has asked us to visit them to do the annual update, and that would be the day before our normal board meetings. So I'll bring that back to you, give you a chance to look at your calendars and see which date makes the most sense, and then I'll let the superintendent in Barrington know which date is the one that you guys choose.
And that is at 6 o'clock, not 7, correct?
Correct. I'll get you the specifics once we get, we lock down the day. But they just, it shouldn't be more than a half hour to 45 minutes, so it shouldn't take up a whole night. We did have a non-meeting set up for tonight that we don't need, but in doing that, I just wanted to give you an update. We were going to talk about Orchard Drive, about the middle of last week, Sue got a letter from a lawyer who was working, not on behalf of Dennis Meadow and that group, and not on behalf of us, who indicated that may have been a problem with the filing of ownership. But since then, we've got a clarifying memo from a lawyer, another lawyer, who said everything's fine. And Sue just told me tonight that it looks like Dennis Meadow and the fundraising crew are very close to reaching their goal, so we'll keep you posted on Orchard Drive. The next thing that is on the agenda is the enrollment. I do want to say that in seven years, the elementary enrollment is as good as I've ever seen it in terms of class sizes. We are in August, obviously, and things can change. Adding the fourth kindergarten teacher at Masway was, turns out to be a really good move. And you can see the first grades look good. I think we're at the point, for the first time since I've been superintendent, that we are in compliance with policy 2B and the recommended ranges for class size, so both Masway and Mohermit look like they're in as good a shape as we've ever seen them this early in the year. We'll see how it holds up as school opens.
I do have a question about kindergarten at Mohermit, which is, you know, 1919. Should there be more kindergarten registrations? Would those children go to Masway at this point?
No. The way that the board has asked me to operate is that we would shift kids only if they exceed or meet, if one school has met the recommended class size, then I would assign new students to the other school. The recommended class size for kindergarten is 18, so the answer to your question, if we get new kindergarten enrollees, would be that they would go to Masway. But everything else looks pretty good.
And the kids that had to go to different schools last year, they're now back?
No, we gave them an invitation, and through all of the angst that people went through last summer, predictably, they stayed in the school, other than one. They stayed in the school that they were assigned, largely because the children build friendships and parents get used to the school that the children are going to, so only one chose to return to Mohermit. The middle school is, right now, at 666 students, and you can see below that there is about 13 kids yet to be registered. So the middle school is pretty much where it was in the spring, so that's also good news. And the high school is relatively close to where it was in the spring as well. The one downside for the high school is that the Barrington tuition students, for the first time, we didn't meet the goal, and so we're about, I would say at this point, about 10 students short, Sue. But we have an action on the board tonight for a tuition student, and we'll have another one at the next board meeting for a tuition student. So again, August may change that number, in fact, will change that number a little bit. Any questions in the middle school or high school?
One question maybe and one comment. One thing with the Barrington that might be helpful for us to know, is the number reflective that they don't have that many children of high school age, or are they opting to go to different schools? And if somehow we can get those kind of numbers, like maybe the historic on how many go to Co-Brown, how many go to Dover, how many come to us?
Yeah, I can get that.
Just to make sure.
Sure. Be glad to do that, Ken.
And just the thing about enrollment, and just to make sure we're cognizant of it, Riverwoods is scheduled to open in December in Durham, and out of the people who are moving to Riverwoods, it's estimated that at least 30 houses are going to go on the market in Durham, and I expect they're going to go to families that have children. So it's one thing that I think we might see as a school district, one, kids coming in mid-year, and also maybe this might impact what our numbers are next year. also maybe this might impact what our numbers are next year. And of course, that's theoretical, but, but just to think about it.
That's a great observation, Kenny. Thank you. I don't think anybody has come to share that, that particular idea. That would be the equivalent of a housing development going up in, in Lee. We would, in fact, Lisa and Sue and I went and visited Davis Road. Is that right, Lisa? Davis Road? And there's 17 new houses going up-
Daniels.
Daniels, Daniels. Seventeen new houses going up in that development in Lee as we speak. I mean, foundations are poured and houses are going up. It's not, I think, out of that, there might have been four empty lots. And yet, they're ready, they're ready to go. So we're getting quite a lot of activity from that development as parents are asking if their children can start in Oyster River, even though their house won't be completed until like September 20th or October 1st. We have a family coming in from Hawaii and, you know, they're finding temporary housing and that's where their house is, is going to be. So when that happens, I get a letter from the developer telling me when the family, when they expect the house to be done and the family will be moved in. If it involves another school system, I do have to talk to that superintendent almost always. In fact, I would say always. I haven't had any yet. Superintendent say, well, of course, you know, it's only going to be a couple of weeks into the school year. We don't need the child to start in our school system and then end up in yours. Then, you know, that's what's going to happen. So we try to work with the families.
Thanks.
But that was really good on Riverwoods, Kenny. Thank you. I thought you were going to tell me that we're going to have children there.
Yeah, those houses.
Yes, I was wondering where that, I was wondering where that was going.
Theoretically, right?
Right. So the next part of my report was to just talk about the construction projects in the district. Several of board members saw the front office at the high school. That absolutely will be ready for the opening of school. It's almost ready now, just in the punch list stage. We may be waiting on a piece of glass. But if you have a chance, the first door to the, the front office, do a walkthrough. It, it came through very, very impressively. The Mohermit project, equally impressive, I think will be at punch list stage when the students arrive. And I think some of the outside pieces, like the, the sitting wall, won't be ready when the children arrive. But it's being constructed across the parking lot. And what they'll do is they'll construct it while the kids are in class. So that's turning out to be a very handsome addition. And if you haven't had a chance to drive by Mohermit, it's going to be a really nice, really nice addition to the school. I also would say that the, I think when the, the grounds are done and the sitting wall is done, one of the things that David did that I think is so super impressive, because it always comes out in the details, right? You can do a construction project and what really makes it look nice is ultimately the details. His work with Indigenous people, the sitting wall is going to have words written in their language and symbols from their history embedded in the wall. So we'll, you know, do what we did at Masway and capitalize on the theme of the school. Having been named after a chief, we wanted to carry that forward. And, you know, what I had mentioned Denise earlier is we should have our fall meeting, October meeting at Mohermit, so you guys can see that project as well, instead of doing it at Masway. So I can't remember whether we scheduled it for at Masway or Mohermit. But regardless, we should do our fall elementary school meeting there, so you guys can see how nice that project is. And, you know, speaking of details, the, the mason on that project, incredible. The, the columns, the brick and granite column, there's four of them, David? Just beautiful, beautiful work. And the columns actually become part of the interior of the office as well. So just again, the devil's in the detail. And I think the addition is going to be a really handsome, handsome addition for the school. Any questions on the construction projects? David?
Can you say-
Did I miss something?
No, there are a lot of former Oyster River students working on the project, in these crews. It's just really cool that you can talk about how they went into the school system and where they are working in our school system.
And thanks for that. And the Indian symbol, symbols were actually crafted at the high school using our 3D printers. So the kids did that as well. So I don't sure they're going to use those in the end, but the idea was that the kids were, our high school kids were involved in the crafting of it. So it's really cool. Another issue that I wanted to share with the board tonight was just where we are in hiring. We're in really good shape in terms of our professional staff. We were able to bring on Melanie Anstil for grade one at Masway, Megan Thompson as a half-time biology teacher at the high school, and Melissa Jean is the replacement for Misty this year. And she's incredibly experienced and we're thrilled to have her onboard. Now, historically, Tom, what has happened is when I've hired and the board hasn't been involved, you usually take a vote of support or something. So it's in the record that-
Okay.
-that you've seen them and-
Jim, would you be able to send us, and maybe I didn't see it and missed it, information about these three individuals?
Yeah, I, you know, Wendy was on vacation this week, Kenny, and I looked at that and I said, oh, yeah, but I can do that, absolutely. Again, I should have done that anyway. But when your right-hand person is out, we just don't operate nearly as efficiently.
Right.
Send profiles.
Do you want to wait for that? I mean, we've already acknowledged that he can-
Yeah, they're-
Right, yeah.
That the, so this is kind of just a-
I could just do that in an email to the board or something.
Okay. Denise?
So I'll just make a motion to accept as presented, or to, however you want the wording to be. Because I know we're not actually approved-
Just to support the superintendent's-
To support the superintendent's hiring.
Moved by Denise or second? By Dan? Discussion? And you will send out the background for-
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay. Ready to vote? All in favor, raise your hand. Kenny, are you?
I'm going to abstain. I just-
Okay, six in favor, opposed, extension, abstention?
Abstention, just without information.
Six, six zero one.
All right. Continuing, you have a letter in your board, speaking of tuition students, where a high school student has asked permission from the Stratford School Board to be able to attend Oyster River. The student was interviewed by Suzanne and she supports the request. And then, so in, in finishing this, the, the new law requires that the school board, our school board, take action in terms of accepting the student. So we do need a motion to accept a student from the Stratford School System for our high school.
Denise?
I motion to accept the student for tuition, the tuition student for Oyster River.
Moved by Denise, second by Brian. Other questions? All of us in favor, raise your hand. Seven in favor?
Excellent. Thank you. So this is an actionable item tonight, but I do want to get it in front of the board because I do want to give you a chance to process. As you know, we've entered into cooperative sports agreements with Portsmouth on football and ice hockey. Unfortunately, Portsmouth already has a partner with lacrosse. And so the Newmarket School System reached out to Andy to see if we would be willing to form a cooperative team with lacrosse. So you can see the numbers, especially on the boys' side, have decreased pretty dramatically over the last five years. The girls' numbers have been relatively stable, but Andy feels strongly that if we're going to do it for the boys, we should do it for the girls, because the girls' numbers, you know, didn't start out as strong as the boys' numbers. So you have his memo and Andy will be here in the first meeting of September, when we plan on bringing this back to you. But we wanted to make sure you knew that, that request is in play. Any questions related to that? Denise?
Yeah, I realize Andy isn't here tonight, but I, I just curious what might account for such a dramatic drop from 20, you know, 15 to 2019 in terms of competition from other sports or kind of-
Yeah.
-what might be the reason for that significant, because it's like half, basically. I mean, less than half, so.
I, I would defer that to Andy-
Right, right.
-because he, he could give you a much better answer than I could.
Yeah. But I figure in case he needs to do a little research or something, because that precedes the time that he was here, so.
Yeah.
And have parents been informed of this proposal? Or if not, when will they be?
Another Andy question.
Gotcha. Okay.
Because that was very, very sensitive-
Yeah.
-last time we did this.
Any idea of the season? Are they both the same fall or both same spring? Or is when spring, when fall, or wait till Andy?
Lacrosse is a spring sport, I believe.
For both, um, the boys and, okay.
Yeah. So we have time. That's why it wasn't, it wasn't an immediate issue. I'll make sure Andy gets those questions and is ready to talk to you more about it. And we'll find out, you know, what he's done to engage the parents.
Do we think that, does the approval process work fast enough that this could be in place for spring 2020?
Andy thought so. I did ask him that. Yeah. He would be here tonight, but he's got a medical reason for being up.
Should we try to put it on the next meeting in August, if we can, rather than wait till September?
Yeah, let me check with Andy in terms of his recovery.
Okay.
If we're going to do that, are you thinking for a vote or for a discussion?
Discussion, possible vote.
Well, if we're going, if we think we're going to proceed to a vote, I think Dan's point about communicating with parents needs to happen before we do that.
I'll, I'll send the Indian email.
If it's appropriate, just to expedite, given that it might be time-sensitive, I think to some degree, replicating the process that ultimately resolved the last cooperative proposal might be worth at least exploring or following to a degree.
Yep. Yeah, I would say that, you know, the, the issue in particular around the boys is you're at the point where you won't be able to maintain a program. So-
Yeah, and I take that point. And I learned, I remember learning a lot of the value in the cooperative from that last process. It's just that there, there might be not a complete understanding if, if we don't sort of convene everyone right off the bat. I think that might be the best way to go. But I would defer to Andy. He knows the situation better.
Yeah. And I think certainly the track record of, of girls' hockey, you know, how that went from a sport, a team that could barely get a team together to a team that compete, you know, can compete to, you know, semifinals of the state. It's been a really good model for how this can work.
It has been very, very successful for both school systems, for sure. The next thing on my, my list is the adoption of school board goals. None of the goals that are presented have not been talked, talked about at the board level extensively. The first goal is, of course, you know, the, the trying to, to keep the community informed about the vote in March related to the new middle school. The second goal is a revised goal based on all the input that we've had around communication. And the third goal is on competency-based education. So Tom and Denise felt it was important that the board take action on these goals. I agree. And so that's why this is in your packet. So I'm open to conversation by the board related to these three goals.
Denise?
I don't know if we want to take them one at a time or just kind of jump in. I did have a minor change that I'd like to suggest for the communication goal. Or is that, is that a separate?
I think you can, you can do-
I can jump in?
Yeah.
Okay. So for the communication goal under goal three, excuse me, it's the-
It's goal three of goal two.
Yeah, goal three. Review and update board policies and create engaging content. Just under the contract with a professional to write engaging articles focused on staff and students. I'd like to add, and district initiatives.
Sure. That would make sense.
Mkeydoki. Any other thoughts related to these three goals from the board? Michael?
In the middle of the communication goal, are we ensuring or ensuring?
English teacher.
I'm going to defer to Tom on this one.
Yeah.
Is it I-N or E-N?
Oh, it's-
E-N.
E-N.
All right. So it's supposed to be-
Where were you?
It's the seventh, one, two, three, six bullet.
Oh, is it in there twice?
Goal two.
Oh, it's in there twice.
Oh, it's in there twice.
It's also the title of the goal.
Okay.
Where else is it, Michael?
The six bullet and the blackface goal two headline.
We see it there.
Oh, and there's actually another one in the fourth bullet. Review web content monthly to ensure all links.
Okay. I'll just do a search and replace.
Just change them all.
Yeah.
Got it. Thank you, Michael. That's why I'm a art major and not a English major.
I think, I think we thought that the, certainly the CBE goal and the middle school goal were pretty much locked into the strategic plan. So essentially, we kind of already made a decision on those. The communications goal is the newer one, which we didn't, we chose not to do within the strategic plan. So I don't know how you're feeling with those, you know, are we ready to go ahead with those? It seems to be those are things we've kind of been working toward pretty much really for a couple of years or not, or longer. So whether we're ready to go ahead with those, to vote on those goals tonight, whether we need time? What do you think?
Just even before we get there, but Denise, the change you recommended that was in goal three-
Ken, can do, Kenny.
Yes.
Under contact. And I think your change is really good. But I, to even tie it into with middle school and other things, I, I think that individual would also be someone very good in addition to board to write about facilities, capital improvement plans, which would include the new middle school. Because I could see someone doing a really good articles on, on things that are happening in the district with construction.
I think that would be kind of implicit in that.
Yeah, that was, yeah, absolutely, Ken.
So do you think we should add, add it as a-
I think, I think that was where I was headed anyway, to try to hit these various district initiatives, because I don't, I don't anticipate he'll always be writing about the middle school, because there's many more things going on in the district than just the middle school. Yeah.
So, so should it be added or should it be implicit?
I don't think so. I think it's there.
You think it's there?
But most, Kenny feels like strongly it needs to be spelled out clearly. But that's, that was my intention as well.
Okay. Could, because then I have, are we ready to have a motion to approve these three goals as, you know, as revised by, with the minor?
I guess on, on the competency, it sounds like if we're going to be discussing the plan for the school year at the next meeting, really that's where the goal, the goals for the competency-based education part of this are coming from. I mean, what's-
I think that's, that's-
What's here is what's done already.
I think, I think that that's the first step. I think I could imagine us moving, you know, doing more than one meeting about that. I mean, we still, you know, where we might have teachers come in and talk more specifically about what they're doing in classrooms.
So a lot of, Michael, just, you know, I think I'm, I think I, I think I'm getting where you're coming from. So the board actually adopted the goal above that's in italics. By the time we hit the next meeting, almost everything in that goal will be done.
Right.
And so the point of the workshop from my perspective is to share that work, but most importantly, to get into dialogue with you guys. But and with, this is the work we plan on doing in the upcoming school year. That's what will come out of the workshop. Because Suzanne and Jay and David and Misty and Todd and I have been talking about this all summer. And so we want to make sure that we give you the work that you asked for, but also share with you what we're going to do in the upcoming school year, based on the strategic plan and the first goal. And, you know, there'll be, that'll be part of what we present in the next meeting.
So when we, when we look back at how we did, that's what I want to look at. Because what's already here is already done.
Yes, because we have eager beavers on the administrative side who've been working to try to get that piece done. Because from our perspective, this was, you know, if you do it in levels, this was, you know, basic information that we should have definitions and all of that. So we should have had that right along. That work has been worked on all summer.
Right.
But you're absolutely right. Once we get to the conversation in two weeks, the idea is we're going to share with you where we feel like we're going to take the district in the next year. You guys will provide us feedback. We'll finalize that strategy for the year. And, and that will be an extension of this goal.
Okay. And then I have two, two things on the, on the middle school side. One is
Yes.
The suggestions here, the A through I, I guess those are all, those are all tactics. Those are what we're going to do. That's great. That's, that's spot on. I think part of the goal here is engaged and informed, maybe, maybe it says this well enough already, and this is just me kind of getting through this a little differently, but engaged and informed public going into the election in, in, in March.
Yeah.
So I, I, and I know we won't do this, but I don't want to make sure we're not limiting ourselves to the things that are-
No, absolutely. So these, these, this is my basic plan. I anticipate 19 meetings based on the A through I strategy. But that will, what I didn't put down is that, for example, all the open houses that'll happen across the district will have a presence. Any music performances that happen in the fall will have a presence, that kind of thing. And then, you know, what also would be ideal, Dean, is for house parties where people would invite us in and people would invite neighbors, Dean, and we would be able to hold house parties, so to speak, with people who don't typically get here. And so we'll, we'll be looking for, for friends of the district to be able to say, hey, Jim, can you come down? Or it could be Jay, or it could be Todd, or it could be a board member, you know, it doesn't always have to be me who talks about it. But it would be, it would be great if we can get into some informal situations. The meeting in July, we had about 20, 24-ish people, but they were completely different people. It was a lot of seniors in the audience.
That's beautiful.
And they were very engaged and asked really great questions. And, you know, even though it was a small audience, it was an engaged audience and it was a different audience. So I think that, you know, this just represents, you know, a core. You know, I counted the meetings from, from last spring and we had 17 meetings, you know, from March to, to July. This sets a core of about 19 meetings, but it's, I'm, I'm hopeful that that isn't what our limit is. I'm hopeful that we can get many more meetings. I see the middle school, I mean, Todd and Suzanne and Jay and Misty and, and David are carrying the weight of the CBE. I'm carrying the weight of the middle school. And Jay is absolutely there with me as his bill. But, you know, we're trying to make sure that we're channeling our resources as effectively as we can administratively. And so I tend to review their work, add suggestions. They tend to review my work and add suggestions. But we're, we're taking on a different load. And Sue has been instrumental in helping me with the middle school piece as well. So that's how we're attacking it, Michael. And I think it's the best we can do, given the size of our, you know, core team. But I'm willing to go out five days a week, if that's what it takes between now and March, to inform people. So it's just a matter of opportunity.
Okay. And then provided that the, that the vote in March is successful, the construction schedule is totally dependent on a very rapid start-
Yep.
-after that. So that's still within the school year. So I'm wondering if there should be a corollary to this one that is, and I don't remember what the milestones are. I didn't look back at the last, the presentations from, from Ron. But if there should be a corollary here that's basically get as far as Ron's construction schedule says, we need to get-
Yeah, I can have, in fact, I'm, I'm visiting two schools tomorrow with Ron. I'll mention it to him. I'm going to Wells and I'm going to Midcoast up in Rockland. And I will mention to him that if he could do something like this, instead of the, you know, the Gantt chart that they tend to use-
Right, right.
-that this would be much more readable.
Yeah. So essentially, provided-
Yeah, I'll ask him and Andre to do that.
The vote is successful, we want to be at this point by June 30th.
Be glad to do that. Ask.
So do you want that on the plan or?
Yeah, yeah, I'd like to add that to the goal. I guess I'm-
Add that as a number by Jay or something?
What do I want it to say? So-
Construction schedule if, if vote is successful?
So yes. Yeah, I'd move to add to, to goal number one, paragraph J, that if the, if the bond vote is successful, that we achieve milestone as determined by the construction schedule. And you can fill that in when we-
I could, I- I could, I just would suggest that it's sort of, it's almost like, I guess, in its own goal, I, I don't know that we should just tack it on as part of these outreach efforts as a J. I'm kind of wondering if as part of the middle school goal, maybe the first one could be called pre-construction, and the second goal could be called post-construction. I mean, not post-construction, post-approval or whatever.
So call that a post-approval goal?
Yeah, pre-approval, post-approval, something like that.
Does that make sense?
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay.
So the goal one would be renamed? Pre-approval?
Yeah, pre-bond, post-bond.
Yeah, pre-bond, post-bond, yeah.
Okay, the suggestion?
Excellent.
So we ready to vote with those changes? Are there other changes? You okay? So there we go. Ready to vote?
Need to motion, Brian.
Okay. I will, I'll make a motion to adopt the three board goals as presented.
As amended.
And amended.
As amended, and amended, yeah, presented and as amended, yes, correct.
Moved by Denise for second, second by Dan. All in favor, raise your hands. Seven in favor, the goals are adopted.
Excellent.
Good step.
And I know this is a long night for me, but it's been a while since we met. Doris has asked if she could hire two cashiers to work the schools. She has about, about $60,000 in, in, in her account, and she's asked, she asked me if I would allow her to hire two cashiers. I said, well, even though it's not general fund money, I really feel uncomfortable doing it unilaterally, so I just wanted, I asked Doris if she would mind presenting, and then I would prefer avoid action on any hiring, whether it's taxpayer money and all, so.
Good evening. So there's a national standard for hiring for school kitchens. It's called the Meals Per Worker Hour. It's a form where you put in all the meal equivalents for each school, the number of hours in the school kitchen, and they're supposed to produce so many meals per worker hour. When I came here seven years ago, we were not even close in any school. We were actually less than half of what we should be producing in some of the schools last year for most of the year. The high school was producing over 70 meals more than is required for the labor they have. The middle school was producing over 100 meals more than for the labor they have. The year before I came, they all lost hours, but they've worked hard to bring things together. We've all worked together and they've supported the changes we make. And my managers at high school and middle school particularly, because it's very busy, it's fast paced, they're tied to a register, and I really feel like it would actually probably pay for them to get off those registers, be in the kitchen, see what's happening, and, you know, help where help is needed, watch for theft, not that anyone would ever take anything, but I really do think that things will run more smoothly and it will end up paying for itself in the long run. So that was the reason why I was doing that. I talked to my staff last year, we had a manager's meeting during the last, actually it was the day of the, the middle school's day of service, the Service Palooza, and I got to take my managers offsite for a four-hour meeting, which is good, because usually I'm pulling them out of the kitchen for an hour and they're looking at their watch the whole time. And that was the, one of the things that stood out the most was managers being on the register makes it very difficult for them to know what's going on in their kitchens. So I think it's better for the students, and it'll be better for the programs in general, and may even increase production even, participation even more, so.
So I don't ask for board action on this request.
You just informs this, right?
Well, I would be more comfortable.
You do, you are asking for?
I would be more comfortable to board.
Okay, I'm sorry, I misunderstood you.
No, no, I know, because I was kind of vacillating with Sue and Doris on this, but I think any personnel issue should require, require a board.
It's out of money that she's generated.
Yeah, it's out of money she's generated.
Also, it's $65,000 for fund downs from the last three years.
Thanks, Doris. I'll make a motion to approve the two part-time nutrition staff.
Moved by Al, second. Dan, further questions for Doris? Hearing that all in favor? Seven in favor?
Thank you.
I would like to also say, while I have the microphone, that our state government is supporting our children, and last week, the governor, if you saw it in the news, signed the bill that will give all the children that qualify for reduced meals a free breakfast. They will not have to pay the 30 cents they normally have to make.
That's excellent.
They usually have to pay, so that's really good.
And how many children did you serve lunch to this summer?
Oh, gosh. Yesterday I put in, I think it was 1,251. That was just for July, not counting the days in August that we've had. So it's definitely the most successful year we've ever had, and it's gone up every year, so I really think we should continue.
Well, thank you for the good work, Doris.
And the last thing I just wanted to say quickly is that I'm working with a school group, farm-to-school group in, at the state level. They want to form a farm-to-school network, because we're the only state in New England that doesn't have one. And the things I'm hearing from all these people around the state is that Oyster River is a model district, because you support local foods so well, and it's pretty much unheard of elsewhere. So I think you'll be seeing ORCSD's farm-to-school program a lot in the news over the next few years. Thank you so much for your support.
Thank you. Is the, the legislation to provide funding for breakfast, is that effective immediately for the start of the school year?
Immediately, yes. And, and you don't think it sounds like much, but when parents are struggling, and, you know, they're going to choose one meal or the other. We have very few students who qualify for reduced actually buy the school breakfast. So they're choosing lunch over breakfast, because they can just, you know, give them a bowl of Cheerios, but some kids can't eat when they first wake up. So I think it's going to be really good for our kids. It'd be really good for our kids if more people at all levels would have their children eat school breakfast, because then there's no overt identification. So, thank you.
Thanks, Doris.
Thanks, Doris.
And just before we go to the regular agenda, I just want to give you an update on Learn Everywhere. The commissioner presented the bill to the Joint Committee of the Legislature that is the rulemaking body. The committee sent it back to the commissioner for revision. They found a number of things that they felt weren't in compliance, compliance with current law. Next week, myself and the superintendent from Winnicott, Barrett Christina from the School Boards Association, have been invited by the commissioner to sit down and see if we can come up with something that would be palatable to the state. And so I accepted that invitation, of course, and so I'll keep you posted on that. And that's the end of my report.
Great. Sue, I don't know if you had anything more? Okay. So I think we moved down to a motion to appoint the 2019, 2020 Sustainability Coordinator stipend position?
So I would nominate Maggie, who we all know, for that role. You might recall during budget season and throughout the school year, we have been talking about a transition in terms of how the sustainability green team works. Maggie is part of that transition, and we have budgeted based on a community warrant, $40,000 for sustainability. And Maggie is the sole remaining person from a team of four that we started out with, and she's been an incredible value to the, to the school system. So I would recommend $20,000 stipend for Maggie to continue that work. And you might recall when we were talking about teacher leaders, that we were going to use the remainder to try to generate teacher leaders at each building that would work with Maggie. So I would nominate her to you.
Questions about this?
Question. So the, if, the new title is Sustainability Coordinator, not Green Team Leader, correct?
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you.
It's a kind of a platform that I think is incredibly important, and, you know, and I know we went from the model of, of $5,000 thing stipend at each school. We're moving to now this $20,000, and kind of, I mean, it is something I highly value, but I feel uncomfortable without really knowing what it means. I, I don't see a job description. I don't see how someone's going to interface with the schools. I don't see kind of the hours that someone is going to be working. I don't see how they're going to present on their work. We saw a presentation today, and it sounded like that person was, he's an intern, but somewhere there was a thing, he was brought on for 50 hours, and I don't know what that means. And I know Maggie personally, Maggie's an incredible person, but before I could vote to approve this, I really want to know where we're heading, and I, I don't have that information.
Well, we can present a more formal proposal, Kenny. I didn't, because I felt like this was a continuation of the work that we'd been doing, but I certainly am willing to do that.
And I think the continuation of the work is something that's in question in what work really is going on. I, I know for me, as a board member and someone really sensitive to this issue, I really, I'm not really sure what's happening.
No problem.
From green teams.
Yeah, I'm agree, the only thing I would say too, because it's like the stipend that's jumping from 10,000 to 20,000, it's a doubling of the stipend. Right, so we've gone from four people to two people to one person. I know, but it's Kenny saying, it's like, what is that, what exactly does that mean? And how's that work? If we could have more details.
So come, come back with a fuller job description.
Absolutely.
Because it is a change.
Yep, no problem.
We have a number of coaches, and I was wondering if the board would be willing to maybe take as a cluster, as a, unless they were to pull somebody out, the approval of all the coaches and volunteers and all the, all the stipends? I think there's like four lists that we have. So I wonder if somebody would be willing to make a motion just to approve those as a block? Brian?
I'll make a motion for volunteer and paid coaches positions for the Midland High School.
Okay, so the high school coaches, the Oyster River Department, all those, all those stipended positions?
All of them, yep.
Okay. Moved by Brian as her second, second by Denise. Discussion on these? Hearing that, all in favor? Seven in favor. So all the stipended positions are approved. So Denise, you want to talk about policy?
So we have JLCF, which is, it's the one that we, I think?
That's Wellness?
Four, right, the Wellness. The policy, the other policies are new policies that are being required by the federal government. So that includes, excuse me, policy DKC, DA, and D2, and they are all in your packet. And as you can see, they're all in blue, because they're all new, so. I don't know if anybody has any questions about those at all.
Any questions? Do you want to then move those as a block?
Yes.
Okay.
The Wellness one.
Excuse me?
I'd like to pull the Wellness one.
All right. So.
Oh, no, never mind. It's, I see what I mean.
It's okay?
Yeah, it's okay.
Okay.
Denise is going to move them as a block?
So, yes, so I'll move as a block for first read, policy JLCF Wellness, DKC, expense reimbursement, DA, fiscal and federal monitoring and management, D2 procurement as a block.
And moved by Denise, second by Brian? Further questions on these?
Just a quick question on the, on the cluster of fund administration policies. Are we having to actually change the way we handle anything, or is this just a reflection, a formalization of processes that are already in place?
There are processes that we've had in place for years, and so what happened is the state was audited by the federal government, and the federal government saw that the state didn't have these policies, and therefore they trickled that directive down to each school system. So, you know, Sue's been meticulous, as, as you know, to take, her taking care of our books and doing the things that we should be doing. So really, it's, it's just articulating in policy practice.
Thanks.
Ready to vote? All, all in favor of approving these in first read as a block? Please raise your hand. Seven in favor that they're all approved. School Board Committee updates.
Did we miss a couple?
Which one?
Stipend, Activity Advisors.
I thought we approved all the stipend. I thought, I thought the motion was to approve all the stipend.
Good with that.
Okay. You made the motion, but I assumed that's what you meant.
That's it, I'm going back to seconds.
Okay, okay. Manifest Committee met?
Yes, Manifest Committee met, approved the manifest. We have, and I will just say that the current committee will meet one last time on August 21st, and then the new committee will take over on September 4th.
And we say who the new committee, I remember we did, I think I was on it, and, sorry, who, I'm trying to remember who we said the next committee was.
Oh, me.
You, is it you, me?
Yeah.
Okay. The Middle School Building Committee met again? I think we met probably a couple times, two or three times since the last meeting, working on exterior of the building, working on issues of positioning of the building, whether you're going to need a road behind the building, which we don't hope, doesn't happen, you'll be.
We're getting into the minutia.
What?
We're getting into the minutia at this point.
Yeah, yeah. Going through line by line in terms of cost, and so we're kind of getting to maybe a point where you might have some trade-offs to meet our, the cost of.
So we will have a presentation by Ron at the next board meeting, so we'll have 30 minutes of presentation by Ron, and then we'll spend 90 minutes on the CBE workshop.
Also, I think that we need to begin to think about how, I mean, we've talked in terms of our goal about what we're going to do as a board. I think that there are things that we need to be done by citizens and parents and how that group gets formed, you know, whether we assume, I think that we're going to have to take some initiative to see that that group is formed, so that money can be raised, science can be developed. And I've, I've contacted Doug Banks and David Moore and people that worked in the public library, how they did it, you know, what kind of, because I think that was a very successful campaign, and just how they did it, because I think there's going to be work that's going to have to be done outside of, you know, the school district. I mean, it is all on your shoulders.
Right.
And it can't be on our shoulders. I think there's a, and how that group forms, and when that group forms, and what, what benchmarks are going to have to be there to get, to get the vote out.
So this is a big distinction between informing the public and advocating for the public, and that distinction is made in law. So I can go out and do these 19 meetings plus and tell people what the situation is, but I can never end a meeting saying, please vote for the new middle school, because you switch from providing information to advocacy. But anybody, I mean, when this board is not in, present as a whole, each of you can advocate as citizens, as can Dean and other people who are super interested in making sure that the current school gets replaced. But I think what Tom is talking about is, you know, when we did the new field, we had an advocacy group. When we did the revision on the high school, there was an advocacy group, but that advocacy group can't be in the formal position of superintendent or as a collective body. As individuals, obviously, we all are voters in the district and we all care immensely, but we can advocate as individuals, but we can't advocate as a body, or I can't advocate in my official position as superintendent.
And, you know, with the field project, I think our kind of parallel group worked very, very well. Al and I were involved with the police station in Durham, which passed overwhelmingly, and again, we were in the same handcuff roles, being on town council.
Exactly.
So I think recreating that model, and I think one of the biggest aspects of it is going to be engaging the students, and really having the student involvement and having them be such a connection to the community as well. And students manning kind of little stations outside of a grocery or things like that, I, I think that makes such an impression on people, and I think to put together a robust group. And when we did the fields, we had at least two students, I think even more, that came to our meetings and really worked incredibly hard, and I think were incredibly effective. And let's try to repeat that, I think.
Just wanted to share one small story, I may have shared it before, but the new market advocacy group for their, their current construction projects on the high school and elementary school, the school system actually allowed them to. high school and elementary school, the school system actually allowed them to make a direct, allowed them to make a direct link to the webpage. And that was brought to court. And the school system was, was slapped on the hand for that. I mean, we can't prevent anybody, I mean, Dean does it all the time in his blog, of creating their own connection. But, the, the courts made the decision that crossed the line between informing and advocacy. So, it's just, it's a really tricky space. It's, and we have, and we have to be very, very careful as an official body and as a superintendent that we don't cross that line. But, having said that, Tom is dead on. We need advocates out of the community.
Yeah.
No, I just add, since we started with Orchard Drive, Kenny and I have been working on the Orchard Drive project with, with Dennis Meadow and Ellen Snyder. And I put up, we've been kind of busy getting a lot of articles out. But, if you go to the Celebrate Durham website and you click on the community header, it'll bring you down to an article that I wrote, which is called Help Us Build A Better Durham. And I think from the perspective of what we mostly talked about here at the board is that it's just this piece of property that we're unloading. And the article really talks about where Orchard Drive is. And then it, I think the real nuts and bolts of the work that's been going on right now has been Ellen and the Land Storage Committee working with UNH and also with New Hampshire Fish and Game to actually build out a trail system. And there's a map of all the proposed trails. So, it really shows why it is a linchpin property. On the blog site, not to push it, but there's also if, you know, as we raise money, the more even small donations that we get makes it more likely that we're a better candidate for grant funding to come in. So, there's information on the project itself. And there's also a link to the, to where you can donate if you want to give money to the project.
Right.
Thank you, Ellen.
Other committee updates? Public comment?
Hi, I'm Dean. I'm happy to have everybody for a party, but I gotta get approval myself.
Well, we'll have live music if you do, though, right?
Okay. Future meetings are listed here. And we will be scheduling, as Dr. Moore said, the meeting with Barrington. So, I guess, there'll be kind of communication with us about which, which of those dates we're past. We have no non-public, no non-meeting. So, I think we're ready for a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Moved by Al, second by Brian. All in favor of adjourn? Please raise your hand. We are adjourned.